Last one here.
It's a little after four thirty, so that we can can go ahead and go. Dr. Carl.
Turn it up. Well, we'll turn it over to Kent. Kent's gonna go go through the budget update for you.
I was gonna ask you, I don't, I'm not able to stay long either. I have a relative in hospital and I was just wondering if we could do that. Whatever that other subject matter is all about. I don't know anything about that. The she stuff.
The strategic higher education information.
Whatever you had on.
Yeah, that was, well, they're not going to join with us until probably four forty-five or four fifty. Okay, so. Cause they're connected by Zoom out of Chicago. So.
We probably get through this fairly quickly. Um, so we review the fall update. Uh, obviously each each fall, we do a. Update on the budget, basically. Uh, shows any changes that we've seen. Neither revenue expenditures for the operating budget. Um, also, um, we update the. Uh supplemental information with some of our other reserve accounts and basically uh get ready. For the administration to start working up the. FY twenty-five budget recommendation. So, uh, I've got the booklet up here on the screen that was sent to you before uh Thanksgiving break there. And I'll scroll down to the operating budget. Some information, uh, credit hours really haven't changed, um. Much, we are a little bit better off in credit hours than we thought, and that'll show up on the revenue side also. So going down here to the summary page. Um, you can see that our. Uh, from what we anticipated in August to what we're currently anticipating, we've gone up. Um, three hundred and seventy-one thousand in revenue, and that's detailed on the next page. Um, and then we're adding five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars on expenditure side, and that's also. Uh, detailed uh two pages later. So that. Yeah, we're on OB two, and now we're going to OB three. Give you a chance to catch up.
Tell us when we get to OB one, can OB?
I am your father, Luke. So, on the revenues. We are anticipating a little more student revenue than what we had anticipated in August. Um, almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's good news. Um. Excel and CTE. Um, sometimes we refer to this as Senate bill one twenty-five revenue. Um, we've actually received this money, and it was more than we had anticipated by about thirty-two thousand dollars. And then in the other income. We're anticipating that our interest income is going to be quite a bit higher than we anticipated. When we did the budget in August, so we're adding two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there, so overall about. Um, three hundred and seventy-one thousand to get on revenue. On the expenditures. Uh, we've got some miscellaneous ads here. You can look through those. The big thing was we had. Um, underestimated our utility expense, and we need to add. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars to our utility budget, so. Really, this should have been, um, should have been a lot closer in August. Um, we just didn't have a good estimate at that time. So. Just going back to the summary. I think, of course, um, one thing I want to mention here also is I've shown. Target at fifteen percent of expenditures as opposed to ten point five. Uh, we've had some discussion on that, and this isn't really set in stone. I I was gonna try and get a little more. Um. Information on that for this meeting, but I just didn't get it done with the break, so I think as we go through the rest of the year. We we need to have more conversation on what's the appropriate. Uh, target for unencumbered cash in the operating funds. Couple of other things I'd like to point out, the um. We're still at um on the unspent budget estimate, still showing the same amount, um. Two point nine million dollars. Two, yeah, two point nine million of unspent budget. It's almost five percent, and we were at close to five percent last year. Um, I think want to monitor that pretty close going through the rest of the year. Uh, cause we, we were real close at the end of last year, and this year I know we filled a lot of positions that were unfilled. Last year, so that could be. Um, an issue as we move forward. But again, we'll look at that more closely for the spring update. We're still operating this year uh with a deficit. Um, our expenditures are. Um, expected to be about two point one million dollar higher than our revenue. Um, we're okay. I mean, our cash reserve is up around. Estimated year in balance about fifteen percent right now. The um, eight point four million. But. This this create will create a challenge for us moving forward in that our base now is a deficit. Budget, and that's one of the things we're going to start talking about where we talked about it, but. Start focusing on in our administrative discussions at this point, moving into creating a recommendation for next year. So that's that's the uh operating budget in a nutshell. I'd stop and ask if you have any questions on that before I move over into the supplemental information.
I had a couple. Uh, our total taxes taxes levy for twenty-four, he had changed that to twelve million seven hundred and whatever the change was on it.
One on the very first page.
Very first page.
On the notes.
That's why it's near the bottom. It's supposed to be what?
Oh.
Twelve million seven hundred and change, I forgot the change.
Yes. Yeah.
It's forty-eight thousand and seven forty-eight something or other.
Yeah, I forgot to change that. That was a motion that was made.
Everybody in Kate clan, if you look at like FY twenty twenty-three. Go down to total mill levy, it dropped nine point two percent. Go to total dot taxes levy, it dropped zero percent, so. It's the total tax number that we're levying, not not the mill levy, it's just. And I did have one other question on the on the scholarship. Fee on page OB three. I know on the kids' uh receipt that they get or tuition statement, there's a. Tuition, technology fee, student fee, and like a fifteen dollar registration fee, but what's the scholarship fee that?
It's the activity fee. It would show us an activity fee on their bill, and that's. You know, when we do the um tuition and fee approval each year, that's spelled out. That it is the activity fee and that that the activity fee is used for scholarships. But a good, good question. And I, yeah, I just uh didn't get that changed on the uh.
I did have two on it.
On the the taxes, we did receive the tax. See, mill levy, um, new mill levy from the county, and it was down at that two point seven range, so our twelve point seven, yeah.
And on OB four, says we got a new prism coordinator. That replacing the person that retired. For this additional cost.
That would be a new position.
That that was the new position that we created and filled uh last summer.
I'd like at some point if we could see kind of what. We've got a new. Rate we're making out there.
Yep.
Not a option. Also, at the bottom, it said the equipment maintenance for culinary. I didn't know what that might be.
Yeah, we needed to. Well, we hadn't really budgeted for some of the upkeep that. One thing that's really expensive is the hood cleaning. They have the hoods that catch the grease trap, and that's that's pretty expensive, plus. Um, the utilities, we didn't have enough there, so it was a combination of a few things.
Any other questions?
What do you think of the overall bill? Any covered?
Well, I would have. I don't have that figure right off, and I don't have. Uh, estimate, but we have, you know, the. The unencumbered cash in the operating fund should be about, uh, I think it's eight point seven million. We're going to look at. Uh, some of the other funds, there's four point million, I think, four million and some in the. The uh campus life funds, and then in the. You know, deferred maintenance capital project or three four more million, so um. We were up over twenty million last year. It's gonna be down a little bit, I think, this year. I, you know, I could send it out to you, but I'm I'm not gonna try to do that math in my head right now.
Is the bookstore being about four million part of that too?
Yes, yeah, that's. You know, we can run through these real quick. There hasn't been a lot of changes. But just to kind of refresh our memory, I'll go over to the supplemental. So these pages start out S one, S two. And on S one here. We have what we call the um general fund designated, it's a whole sort of laundry list of different things. Uh, some fees and different things. There's a large amount. On line one, a perf indirect, it's almost four hundred thousand. And just, there's a summary on the next page of what that's to be used for. It's it's all been. Planned, it's mostly in uh IT contracts, long-term IT contracts that get paid for. And what's left here covers the next year, or I guess the remainder of this year, I should say. So, um, I won't spend a lot of time on that page. You have questions, you can certainly uh ask, and we can follow up on those.
What's the fitness wellness fee for?
Um, I believe that's in a like phys ed class, what I would call PE classes. Fitness and wellness.
As we took down that. Jungle gym, adult jungle gym, right? So that's.
It wasn't for the, it wasn't for the. The um.
To be right, related back to the instructional fees needed for supplies and equipment for those programs.
I have a question. So on the gross revenues, if I'm reading this right, I just was kind of. Wondering if it's settled out that. If the in district tuition was up by ninety-seven, the out district was down by one thirty-two, out state was up by thirty-six. And international was up by one thirty-six, that. We had an actual increase in total revenues, even though we had a decrease in enrollment. Is that my interpreting that correct? I didn't know if these.
I'd have to go.
Was comparing it to last year or comparing it to our original budget?
Yeah, I'm just comparing the change.
To the budget.
To the budget, so uh with that, I'd have to go back and see. Uh, if we're actually up in revenue from last year.
Since we made such a big change, if it was an overall net positive, negative, or neutral, I mean, it just would be helpful to know going forward when we. You know, decide what to make our tuition next year.
Can we get back to you and make a note?
Thank you.
And I may be able to even find it later in the meeting, it's.
Yeah.
I think that's the Chrisling magazine, is that in with the paper too?
It's different advisors, but it's.
Yeah, it's part of the MassCom program. Yeah, it's part of MassCom program.
I could bring up something else, please. Uh, I was online on the I P E D data, whatever. In twenty twenty-one, we had a full-time equivalent, a staff of five oh three. Then twenty twenty-two, that went to five sixteen. We had an actual increase of staff. We've been told for years, we've been. Having attrition and not replacing and letting a lot of people go and not replacing, but it actually shows increasing staff. I don't have any idea what that was for twenty-three yet. And we have all the increases in healthcare and insurance and everything else, and then someone just mentioned we added more staff even.
Well, it may be attributed to open positions that we were trying to fill as well, that were part of the budget that. That hadn't been filled one year, but showed up as being filled in the next year.
See what twenty-three would be, except if it's increasing three percent again, that's not losing any that consideration, it's still adding staff while losing. And if we could possibly, I know several years ago, we were at like seventy-three percent. Uh, employee expenses to income of total budget. I didn't know that that might be. Now, that I don't think we talked about it last year at all.
Yeah, look at that.
So on line thirty-three with disciplinary housing fines, looks like they're not collecting very many. Excuse me?
So they're good children.
Quite good that mean? We let them get by.
I mean, the housing times are for life. If they break a housing rule, if they check out, or if they leave the residence hall without a proper checkout, we'll find them. But if they're turning all their stuff in, then we.
Oh, it's okay. I was looking at the other way. Letting them get a monetary fine instead of a slip on the end.
Right.
Then we get grounded or anything where their phone taken away.
We'll send you to talk to you in there.
Yeah. That transcript fee account amazes me, as many transcripts as I've bought.
That that gets used for a variety of different things. We've used transcript fee in the last couple of years to help purchase. Some software that, you know, that they've needed, um.
Find some condition.
Yeah, yeah.
And just as a follow-up, is it possible to know what these numbers would be for twenty twenty-three before waiting till March or next year?
They only, they only do them. You you calculate these designated fee amounts just once a year.
No, no, I mean, the full-time equivalent of.
Oh. For iPads? No, that only goes in once a year.
I understand that goes in once a year, but would we have that information on hand to find out what it was last? Would there be any way of knowing it before next March?
Do you buy February, so you just start the pockets right now?
A couple months. Thank you.
Cap and gown, we charge the student and the student pays this. And we collect twice.
We put, we put collections graduation. We have, um. There's a fee of the, uh.
She's on pitch.
Are you just gonna read it to us?
You could, yeah, I think we're on S one, okay. Up here.
On the cap and gown.
On line twenty-five of S one.
They collect that as part of their graduation, as part of the graduation fee, don't they? I mean, don't they pay? They pay for their cap and gown when they pay their graduation.
I think, I think our fifteen dollar involvement fee. And the person at every semester, part of that goes towards the Catholic gap, because we don't charge for education.
Okay.
We do if they apply for graduation late and expect to buy, then there's a, there's a fee for applying for graduation. After a deadline, but we don't charge it for. The Catholic count on the bottom, because we have that fifteen dollar fee every semester, and part of that goes toward that.
That's nice.
Any other questions for Kent?
So it's okay, I would.
And is there more on the supplemental you want to cover?
I just wanted to kind of refresh on some of the reserve funds. Uh, this is S four, this is the um. Academic program review. We're planning on spending that down to about seventy-eight thousand, this is on. S four. And. Line sixteen, then on the uh, we also. Put the workforce development grant, this is where we got to one point four million dollars for this year. And talked to Tom about that today. We are planning on spending all of that, some really good uh places that we've been able to use that money. Then moving on down, uh strategic initiatives, this would be S five. We did use, um. Money here for the Redler. Building the seven, almost seven hundred thousand, but we'll have about. Uh, eight, we plan on having eight hundred and fifty-five thousand left at the end of the year, so this kind of goes to Julie's question on. How much year-end money we think we will have, and add some of these off as we go along. Uh, the next page is the facilities reserve.
On S three, before we get too deep into it, there's a hospital hospitality management fee account on line six on F three. And we're gonna bring in forty-five thousand and spend seventy-eight thousand, and I don't, I'm not aware we have a lot of hospitality care delivered on that, so.
I think that that's the, uh, if I remember right, that's actually the culinary, it it's labeled hospitality, but that's the culinary. Um, student fee account, the chomp, the student uh organization chomp account. Am I correct with that? Yeah, so it's mainly, it's mainly culinary, but it's just been labeled hospitality management, so we could probably go back and change that.
Line six. Carrie, you might make a note of that for me.
That's separate, but the reason.
Oh.
Right now, there's an conference that has been entered and is included in that, so we haven't actually spent that yet. Um, we do collect these. Knives and.
Jackets.
Jackets, so, um, some of that is anticipated spinning now before we receive.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was confused. I thought that was chomp.
So that that should level out by year-end once that. Let's see. Academic program. Strategic initiatives, this five, we talked about that. Um, facilities fund is six. Uh, we plan on spending this each year. These are uh sort of short-range. Maintenance plan, not the deferred maintenance, and so we we try to budget this at zero each year, and. There is a. Yeah. So there's a list there. You can see what our plan is for spending that money during the year. And the next is the deferred maintenance. And we did, um. We did receive of on line five. Uh, almost one point four million dollars of state funds this year. We're hoping they'll give us more next year. But right now, we, um. We're not sure if it was just a one, I mean, it was a one-time thing. It could be a one-time appropriation again. So we're hoping to have about one point six million at the end of the year, and on the next page. You can see what we're planning on spending during the current year, this one million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And in there, you can see that we've. Upgraded the estimate. On nine hundred HVAC to eight hundred thousand, that's what we talked about. At the last time we met, and Ireland will be. Bringing you a a recommendation on that in December. The rest of those things have been on the list. We talked about them back in August.
Dr. Crowley, uh, help me out again on S seven under uh transfer from the perfect indirect. That one point three million that came from the state, is that the one that has been long overdue?
Well, that's the one. No, I mean, I don't know that it's been long overdue necessarily, because we didn't know that we were going to get it, but when the. Community colleges and some of the technical schools combined years ago. They started to get a capital outlay assessment each year, you know, a dollar amount in their budgets each year. And so, um, when the technical school, technical colleges now, like. Um, which higher technical college and Slane Area Tech, the ones that remain independent. When they went to the legislature in this last budget session and asked for capital outlay dollars. Heather Morgan said, well, if the, if those technical colleges are gonna get it, then the community colleges that have never gotten. Capital outlays should be getting some as well. And so that's why we got, I think there was five million dollars maybe allocated for all of the institutions. Um, and we got one point, about one point uh four million of that. But Heather, Heather's gonna ask for it again, I think, this coming year in the budget year again, so.
That has nothing to do with the three point four of the fully funded.
No, this is completely separate, like the apprenticeship dollars were completely separate. We got two hundred and fifty thousand uh allocation for cybersecurity specifically, and this specifically has to be used for deferred maintenance or, you know, something like that, so. Open to get it again, because it's nice. I mean, it helps offset some of those. Other budgeted items that we would have to spend operational on.
Okay, um, moving to the next page, this would be page nine.
So the locker rooms are about a quarter of a million. What's the other three hundred thousand for?
That.
Um, it's five fifty-six.
Yeah.
Additional expenditures for softball and baseball project.
Where.
Okay, and.
Oh.
Yeah, lunch.
Uh, remember the the um presentation that I um. Put in front of you guys that you approved, we paid for a portion of the upgrades at McDonald's Stadium, we paid for a portion of the upgrades at East Park. Uh, and that was that, um, those together were. Uh, with with some escalation in costs just a little bit, those were just over, they were around two hundred and. Twenty-four thousand dollars, I think, and then the locker room was the other part of that, so it's just combined. I can, I can get those dollar amounts for you again, but. Yeah.
And it looks nice.
It's all combined together.
I didn't mention it before, and I should have did. Is, anytime I see Fiji Stadium's expenses, is that our third? Or do we pay for it and then they retrieve it from the different entities, or how does that split up?
I think I'd have to look at the individual.
In this, I think with the HVAC controls, in this case, we paid for them. Because it was all through Johnson control system, and we are um. Monitoring all of that sort of stuff, um, but those are some of the expenses then that we can go back to you to um the authority to talk about splitting.
If, if I.
We paid for it upfront because it had to be fixed right away.
Yeah, if I remember right, um. That. Because we do monitor it. That we paid for it upfront, but then I think that. It was. I think it's, I don't know if it's. I just don't remember the meaning of the split or anything like that on the.
Yeah, it was.
I I do know that we wanted to monitor it so that we wouldn't have the situation that we had last year.
We, yes, we do monitor it.
So that if something goes wrong, somebody is at least looking at it.
Yeah.
And I'm moving along.
Line eleven just says various expenditures and computers. We got a lot of itemized up in here for four thousand, five thousand, that's pretty big. Just lump sum.
I can go.
I can just tell me a ballpark now, I just didn't know.
I don't know, I'd have to go look into the account and see what you spent on that account. I hope I know.
I hope I know.
Did I have one question too, what did the beginning unencumbered cash change by to their thirty grand?
What page are you on, Shelby?
It's S ten again, line sixteen. Did that have to do with? Number sixteen on. On page O B two, that's.
Is that to year end?
Yeah.
When we report on that in. There's still expenses coming in that were from the previous year, so then, and those come in all during the month of July and. And so anything that came in after the.
We just brought in more than we thought.
Well, it would be paying, paying expenses more, but we're recording.
This one has our, it has our unencumbered cash going up, two hundred and thirty dollars, if I'm reading that right.
S ten.
Six line sixteen. Yeah, I know, that's what, I was just curious.
Carrie, could that be your unspent budget at year end?
That, that I believe is the prepaid expenses that we had not recorded yet, we made the prepaid, so. With us, because of the first money prepaid, we prepaid.
Right, right.
And so that, that prepaid expense, we have not been done. And so that put money back.
Okay, a little zero out. Later.
Those guys are waiting like this. Honestly, so.
Okay.
Thinking that we would engage them if we.
So you accrue at the end of the year.
Well. Not everything, but in this case, we gave those. In this case, because we had paid big expenses two years ago. And then we do an entry to put that all out. And I haven't done.
How do the auditors treat that? I'm just curious.
It doesn't, the entries made for the audit.
Yeah.
We, what we show is you is unaudited. So I, I'll just. I think, I know we have a lot more to do, so as I scroll down here, the next page is some detail of the technology plan. You know, if you're interested in some of those details, we'd be happy to. To look for it. Following page, we set aside. Five hundred thousand for insurance deductible, and we still have about four hundred and thirty six thousand anticipated. Being there year end, if we don't have a big claim with a large deductible. The capital outlay fund, and this is on S twelve.
S twelve.
S twelve. On S twelve, we still have three hundred and thirty thousand in there, but. Where it says potential uses, that money is planned for some of these things. Going on campus life. That's what I mentioned, we. We're estimating about four point seven million at year end. For our. Unencumbered cash balance, that would be an increase from last year, so keep your fingers crossed there. Then there's some detail on the, the four funds that make that up, the bookstore, the student union, the residence hall. And food service. So I'll skip over those. Adult basic ed. On S eighteen. And supplemental ed on. Nineteen, those are basically break even funds, I'm not going to. Spend time on those. Restricted funds on page twenty, this is just a list of pretty much of grants we have for your sort of information on. On different grants that we, we get. Basically, most of those are break even, we spend the money that we receive from a. Federal or state source. Some information on S twenty one. About our self funded health insurance. You know, we're, we're looking at a balance right now of about one point three million dollars. Can't really say if that's good or bad, I think we're, we're okay, and Shelley will be working with our consultants. On what we need to do for next year as we move forward. We're. We're certainly not in any kind of panic at this time.
Basically, what we're seeing right now is based, what we're taking in and pulling from payroll for deductions, both from the employee and from the employer side, is paying our bills every month. And we've had a slight decrease from what our fund was, as far as the initial fund was one point five, so you see we're down by about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, something like that, so. That's not, it's going to fluctuate every month because of claims, so I'm not worried about this at all, our fund is very healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So S twenty two is agency funds, these are funds really that. We just ask, act as a banker for. Different groups and things like that. And there's some information on scholarships following that. And. Some debt service information, but. So I could go through, you know, these reserve accounts, add those up and, and get an estimate of where I think we'll be at year end, but I. I don't have that right now, really, that's, I just wanted to kind of do a refresher, remind people where our funds are in different. Funds and accounts. And. I would, in my presentation there, if there are more questions or comments.
I'm just going to note that our athletic scholarships is about forty nine percent of our total scholarships.
Page and line.
Page S twenty three. And then another thing I'd like to talk about at the board, I know we're a dopey creative campus and all that. Which I think we got her money to spend and go for it, but in twenty twenty five and twenty thirty, we're going to spend nearly a million dollars to continue. To do that, so I don't know. If it's going to be worth it to continue to do that, or it's at least a conversation. Those are only two things.
If I could, I'd like to address Shelby's question about the FTE counts on the iPads from year to year. And why those may have fluctuated.
iPad?
On the iPad, I P E D S, yeah, sorry.
I didn't ask about that.
Do you want an iPad? Okay, real quick, basically those numbers, the reason there's a change in those numbers is due to adjunct faculty. So when we are calculating the full time equivalency, we take three part time employees equals one equivalent full time. And so our counts for our adjuncts go up and down every year as to who's taught and who isn't teaching depending upon. Obviously enrollment numbers or availability of full time staff. So all of the increase is due to that number in our adjunct faculty. So there was a change year over year from twenty two to twenty, twenty one to twenty two of thirty six adjunct instructors. And so that's why you saw an increase in our full time equivalent number.
I would just assume. With our decline, that we wouldn't keep the increasing number of daytime, part time, however, works that full time of faculty employees, it's a good way to give us some.
Yeah.
Idea of what we're spending.
Yeah, and, and.
Increasing compared to.
Yeah, and sometimes, you know, we hire somebody and they work one semester, you know, in that year, and this is a snapshot of a semester recall.
Twenty twenty three to see if.
It's coming, she just ran the reports last week, so.
Guess I could get on the site and see if I could find twenty twenty one and see if it's.
I can tell you, in twenty twenty one, the full time staff number as far as. Faculty, full time faculty and part time faculty, or sorry, full time faculty and non faculty was three hundred and ninety seven in twenty twenty. One in the fall semester, and in the fall semester of twenty twenty two, it was three ninety eight.
Right, that's exactly what I'm saying, we're decreasing and holding. Constantly being told the attrition, 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 not replacing, though we're actually increasing staff.
One person?
It was, yeah.
That is an increase, we're told, we're telling and not replacing.
Well, that's only faculty, right?
No, that was, that was both.
It's the same with the full time healthcare, it was like three hundred and sixty nine people on healthcare. For three or four years in a row, that's not decreasing our employment to match. And that's the thing too, I was bringing up, we're averaging thirteen point one students per class. Need to consolidate, find the best teachers, I don't care if we pay twenty percent more, but we. It's going to be hard to survive on an average of thirteen, and I know it's just an average, but. That's a hard way to make ends meet. Was my whole point in that, we keep the expenses high. While the enrollment's coming down, it's, it's going to catch us and bite us very soon, we're. We keep talking about year after year, we're going to make some tough decisions, but it's four years and we haven't really made any decisions, now we're coming into another couple of years.
What's the full time equivalents stat then? This, the ones that you just gave us, that was.
That was full time. And. Now you add in the part time. You add in part time, then you get. Three part timers, three H one point one C, so in twenty twenty one. Fall semester, we had five hundred and three full time equivalents. Three hundred and ninety seven of those were actual full time staff and Quinn or faculty, they weren't part time. And then in twenty twenty two. We have five sixteen. Full time equivalents, three hundred and ninety eight that are actually, yes, they have to pass.
And those numbers are a little bit different than iPads now, because iPads calculate, I mean, they calculate, use a different calculation.
I misspoke earlier, I'd like to see twenty twenty. Because, because then it, then it would, I would know that, but I don't need to know right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I was trying to get on there today and I had no.
Where website?
I get on other websites and they're click, quick, and now it's like, we're not going to spend any money on internet service for this website.
What site is that?
It's a long one, it's in the.
It's a national technical.
Oh, that's one.
And it's in the screen cap up here, if you want to just, you can highlight it and take out the end of it, that comes up close, I guess. But it's slow.
Think I gave up when I tried to get on that. Are they anywhere else? The same numbers at the same time, are they posted anywhere else?
I'm sure others can do it too, but that's the thing. I think it lists like twenty colleges or something along that.
Any other questions for Kent on the budget comments, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
If we have time, if we have time at the end, I think you have some insurance stuff maybe, right? But let's, we've got folks in wait, in the waiting room on Zoom to talk to us from Strategic Higher Education, so let's connect them. Hello there.
Hi.
Hi there, we have with us Heather Sayre Jordan, raise your hand so they can see who you are, and then Dr. Stacy Adkison, who are. Co-founders, co-CEOs, co-presidents, co-everything of Strategic Higher Education. Which is a. Firm, an organization that assists higher education. With marketing and enrollment issues. They are not just a consulting group, but they are consulting, mentoring, project management. They provide, you know, a full, kind of a full slate of services to help institutions. We got engaged, Kelly actually got engaged with she, we're going to call him she, because that's what they go by. Got engaged with she through some research that she did and some reference work that she did to really kind of look at. Marketing strategies and marketing processes and, you know, things very specifically focused in the marketing area last spring. And what developed into a little bit bigger. Project or area of work, they, they chose the culinary program to really look at. How students engage in the college, how they get interested, how they walk through the entire process of. Interest in the college to enrollment and actually being in classes in seats. And they chose culinary because it was a prescriptive group of students, a manageable size of, sized group of students. To really look at processes and student engagement and all of the things that, that we do. From the time that a student reaches out to us or identifies interest to the point in time where they are engaged and in classes. And so they did some great work with Kelly and with our admissions and advising folks and enrollment management over the spring. And really have helped us understand some significant opportunities that we have to. Change enrollment patterns and make, make some difference in our, our enrollment, which we've seen, you know, a consistent decline. So I'm going to turn it over to Heather and Stacy, they've done really extensive work with our folks and, and really in depth work and. They want to go through some information with you a little bit on what, you know, what they did this past spring and summer with the culinary program and the success that they saw there, not. Necessarily going into a lot of detail about that, but, but really more about what we can do from a future focus perspective. To make some, make some changes, and so. They have a PowerPoint here, I think that Jennifer will help them go through. And I, I've got hard copies of it, if you want a hard copy of it.
Great.
So you can have that. And I don't know if we can. And we still see those guys on the screen too, so we can hear them talking or see them talking.
We'll test, we'll test it, can everybody hear okay?
Yep. So please feel free to add to that introduction if you, if you need to, you guys.
Wonderful, no, we're grateful for the introduction and. We're so happy to take a little bit of your time this evening, I know you have incredibly important work, but. We feel like we have a great opportunity to talk to you about tonight, relative to some assessment that we have done, and then some potentials that we see at Butler, so. Without any further ado, why don't we talk to you just a little bit about some of the work that Strategic Higher Ed does? And Madam President, if there's something that you want to add or subtract, and the same with you Jessica, please don't be shy about it. We want to make sure that we're offering the appropriate information. As your president said, we spent some time very early on doing some analysis and investigation, we understand the board has made a. Investment in marketing, a smart one, and Kelly wanted to make sure that she understood all of the dynamics of not just the inquiries. But also of what was happening to those inquiries, once they arrived in your hands at Butler, and so. We began to facilitate, facilitate some kind of deep level of analysis, not only of. The leads or inquiries themselves, but also what happened to them once they proceeded down the conversion funnel. And we're going to be using this term funnel to describe the process that goes on from a sales perspective to kind of land at an enrolled student. In a program at Butler, and so. The concept that we engaged with Kelly really was about trying to understand why we weren't getting better convertibility. With the leads that she has been driving and her team has been refining over time. Jennifer, could you? Click.
Advance the slide. Wonderful.
That's the really fancy way of advancing slides, thank you for being the clicker. At the end of our analysis. We were very deeply kind of impressed with the amount or volume of lead that we had. But we started to begin to understand some of the conversion challenges through this exercise. Which led us to a series of strategic recommendations that we're going to talk to you a little bit about tonight. Which ultimately led to this proposal that we're hoping to introduce to you as a result of all of the learnings and then. Some of the intervention that we actually performed on your behalf. It is important for you to know that while we're a learning company and a consulting company, we're also a performance company, and so much as. We actually do work on behalf of our partners. We actually do work on behalf of our partner institutions, um, we don't just give you good ideas. Um, we hope that we do give you very good ideas, but we also test all of our assumptions and facilitate interventions. With our own team and our own staff on your behalf to ensure that, uh, we're not, uh, just coming to conclusions. That aren't ultimately, uh, potentially gonna create, uh, really strong results for the institution. So if you'll click us forward one more time, Jennifer. We landed with Kelly specifically because we've been doing this work on behalf of client, clients for years and years. We started our company about, uh, five years ago, specifically because we wanted to work with institutions like Butler. Who were in need of, um, an understanding of this new market. And how that market impacts the critical functions that we perform on the inside. And how do we align both our resources, but also our fundamental processes in such a way that we're serving this new learner? Um, we feel like, um, yes, COVID had a huge impact on our industry. But as important, we really see the consumerist mentality that has come into higher education in particular. Um, is driving a very different felt need on the part of potential students. Both on their way to an institution, but while they're at the institution and even sometimes upon graduation. So Strategic Higher Ed is intended to be a firm that is focused on helping institutions get themselves aligned with a market. That for many, um, many organizations is a bit unfamiliar. Um, and that is really the work that we went after with Kelly and her team.
To be clear, Strategic Higher Ed, um, as an organization is five years old. Um, and while we work with institutions of higher ed primarily, we also work with a connection. Um, to different corporate environments, nonprofit environments where we are trying to integrate. Um, learning and community products together. One of the things that I think is really important also for you to understand is that while Stacy and I, uh, launched Strategic Higher Ed about five years ago. Our entire careers have been in higher education. From faculty and administration to the admissions, um, financial aid, student services departments between the two of us. Literally, we have worked in every, um, area that is the functionality of a higher ed institution. And so when we launched Strategic Higher Ed, it was, um, with the desire to understand. How we could help, um, organizations and higher ed thrive into the future. Having worked with a lot of different consulting firms and led organizations on our own. We realized that there is an enormous amount of, um, opportunity for, um, higher ed, community colleges. Uh, four-year universities, both public and private. To, um, understand a little bit more about the business modelings while higher ed is an industry in and of its own. That has some really particular special functionalities. It is overall a business, so we felt really, um, confident. And excited about the opportunity to do this consulting and as Stacy noted, intervention work. Consulting, recommendations, ideas based on assessments that may last a month to six months are all wonderful opportunities. For an external perspective, but if they can't be implemented, if they can't be engaged with a partner to make a long and effective, long-lasting and effective change. Then we feel like that work isn't complete, which is why we'd like to, um, also utilize the intervention approach, not just to prove out the theory. But to give the institution, um, the opportunity to have it rolled forward as a kind of a final change or a change from which to build.
Yes. So Jennifer, if you'll advance the slide. The pilot project that we were able to facilitate on behalf of the, the culinary program. Really was focused on culinary in so much as those are the direct inquiries and, um, student processing that we did. However, we learned an incredible, a lot, uh, amount about the overall scope of marketing and enrollment at Butler. So while it's isolated in the sense that we work with this particular student population, it's important for you to know. We did have a very broad perspective and ultimately we talked to students in other programs. Specifically because of the, the form and function that we used, um, during the intervention. So in the early stages, we, um, came to the conclusion that the funnel processing. Was really where the conversion challenges had landed. And we began discussing with the combination of Kelly and Jessica's teams. The fact that your process, your sales process at the top of the funnel. Wasn't responsive to this current market. Um, the market expectations have shifted dramatically in the last five years, but they started shifting as long ago as ten years. And we are finding that it is critically important that we manage those buying expectations at the top of the funnel. In a very sales-oriented approach. Um, what we found was, uh, Butler's system was aligned with a market where historically higher ed had positioned. And we were able to garner people's interest and simply process that interest to kind of conclusion and enrollment. Rather than engage in a relational sales process. And as we made this assessment and came to these conclusions. We immediately proposed, uh, the complication of the steps in the funnel and the process that we use to engage. Those students at each of those, um, steps. And our staff began implementing that specific recommendation on your behalf. Jennifer? Thank you. Um, at the end of that, um, early pilot project, we had come to the place that. We were actually already beginning to see an improvement in the conversion levels. We felt that the market was responding much more appropriately and the leads that were coming in at the top of the funnel. Were being processed very, very early, most of the time within twenty-four hours of their arrival. And that improvement in the processing funnel started to yield really early results. So we went ahead and, uh, proposed extending so that we could have a more dramatic impact on the fall term. And Jennifer, if you'll click forward. In the second half of the project, we were able to actually. Comprehensively implement an intervention that was not only the discussions at the top of the funnel. But we were able to partner with your advising team and other members of Jessica's staff. To close those students for fall enrollment into the culinary program. Uh, we. Pulled, uh, the project itself, um. Was a temporary intervention, but it was a test case to demonstrate our ability to kind of remedy what were. Uh, lower conversion levels that needed to be improved. And the sales and relational process that we put in place then landed us right at fifty-four students in the fall, which was significantly above. What the enrollment projection had, uh, started as. And as we got deeper into the, uh, processing here, we also discovered that the systems. That were occurring across your campus weren't fully integrated in service to those enrolled students at the end of the funnel. So we feel like we had a very successful pilot project where we were able to test out. The intervention that we had designed on your behalf. And that ultimately led us to this next generation conversation that I think we're here to have with you today. Jessica, am I missing anything from your perspective there?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Wonderful. You bet.
Great. So our, our next proposal then was to, why don't we take this pilot project where we created some. Deep level assessments across the institution, but really focused on particular program and then our programs. And then the specific program to try out some very applied interventions to see. That if those, what kind of, uh, uh, performance changes those recommendations would include. And as Stacy had mentioned and in your PowerPoint material, um, it yielded fifty-four students, which was significantly higher than what the. Um, the performance trend expectations would show us. So the next level was to think about, and we worked with, uh, Jessica and Dr. Kroll and Kelly and, and all kinds of leadership across the campus. To start to decide what would be an appropriate next level intervention that would harness the momentum of this early project. That would allow these kinds of initiatives to begin a transformation across Butler's enrollments. That would not paralyze its existing infrastructure. To, um, perform on behalf of the other students that are being recruited and supported by the systems at Butler. So we, um, took, took a, a great deal of time to do some assessment and analysis of what kind of program infrastructure. Or I'm sorry, program suites that would look like. And how to integrate some training and development, because as we're talking about a very massive change. In the enrollment, um, infrastructure at Butler, this is a change management project. And this becomes, um, one of those, um, issues that often fail in organizations because of the extra heavy lifting. It takes from the organization to design, train and develop the employees to work in these new systems. So we integrated into this next level project, something very similar as we did in the first, to begin doing some of those interventions. With our staff to accompany and then to mentor and train the Butler staff that are being reorganized in the, um, organization. To hold this sales function and then to do some executive level consulting and engagement to then. Lead the project moving forward, not just to completion of this first enrollment transformation, but the additional transformation. That the campus can take on after our departure. So we, we, um. It's specialized that into three specific areas and we'll talk about those initiatives kind of in detail next. So if Jennifer, you wouldn't mind advancing the slide?
You bet. So the intervention we're proposing, um, to Butler is a direct, um. Integration with your inquiry funnel. And on your behalf, we would like to expand the suite to fourteen to sixteen programs, which we have. Worked with the Butler staff to talk about what that program suite should look like. And we will actually have our staff assisting in the processing in the early funnel management. Um, until we can get some of Jessica's team members trained in the direction of this new interventionist approach. So they will have colleagues with them in the trenches, so to speak, actually facilitating. A very similar kind of approach that we, um, did for the culinary for about sixteen of your other programs. Our staff are long-term enrollment professionals, they're heavily trained in what we call a relationship sales approach. Um, not to be confused with an order-taking approach, right? Um, our work is very highly market-driven and, uh, the conversation and the relationship that we start to design. And build through the funnel mirrors the kind of friendly, friendly, close-knit atmosphere that Butler actually has as a community. But hasn't always used in their sales process. Um, so this applied intervention will actually be co-staffed by our team. And we will be using our team then to train and facilitate that process for members of the Butler community.
So for any of you, um, board, uh, members in your respective organizations, if you have. Um, worked with integrating new positions or new functions at your organizations. Um, those very heavy lifting parts of the early training process, um, are no doubt extensive. Um, but often we find organizations experience an incredible amount of creep. Or, um, loss at the end of those training sessions because of their ability. Once the training goes from in theory or in sample practice to day-to-day activity. It is very difficult to retain a hundred percent of the efficiency you gain in the new models. So one of the things we really like about this approach is that not only, um, is, uh, a collaborative team. Between she, um, consultants and the new Butler, uh, team that is transitioning into these roles, but then it is in. It transitions from kind of a training atmosphere to a mentoring atmosphere. That is on the job, call to call, it's student experience to student experience. And that mentorship is actually as valuable, if not more valuable from our experience in helping that to really kind of. Um, transition that next level professional, um, uh, change. That it really is able then for those employees who have expressed an interest in doing something new and doing something challenging. To feel that support through the process until they really have gotten through those developmental stages. And are ready to kind of take it on in their own, and for then Jessica to be able to further define and develop those team members into more senior level team members.
Yeah. So the second initiative, um, Jennifer, yes, is the staff training and development. The other thing I would offer here is, uh, a number of companies who do work like we do in this space. Conceive of doing this work on your behalf rather than as the development arm. And we really feel like the smart move for Butler is to, uh, making such a significant change in the way that you're processing your enrollment funnel. Is something that you're better to learn to do rather than have someone else do on your behalf. Um, and we feel like this training and development aspect of this program. Specifically set you up so that you are prepared to have moved from. Um, a, a model, uh, uh, at current, which is not as market-engaged or market-sensitive as it needs to be. To a fully engaged, market-sensitive approach with now your own employees prepared to answer that call. Which leads to the third part of this particular, um, proposal, which is focused on our consulting work. Our experience gives us some fairly deep insight to the challenges that we're gonna, you're going to face in this change process. And specifically, one of the things that is critically important as you move through it. Is to be able to tap into those experiences and work to get your systems, including your technology systems. Integrated and aligned to support the new approach. All too often, what happens is if we don't bring the systems along with the process and the people along with that process. We end up with, uh, failed initiatives. And we know that we can provide you a good deal of consulting in the area of how to get your systems set up and integrated. So that they can support this relationship-style sales process. And we also hope that over time, as we get the systems aligned, you'll be able to grow them out. In the student support infrastructure for your currently enrolled students, because once we have that kind of communication. Um, all of your students being a very relational known entity to your staff members. Uh, we can do a lot better in targeting the students, supporting students, making sure they're re-enrolling as they get into the retention component. Of your relationship with that student.
The difficulty with relational sales and relationship, um, customer support or student support. Is that it is often, often becomes an efficiency problem, a scale problem. It would be great if we could have one advisor to every twenty-five students. That's not scalable, that's not practical. So one of the ways, uh, that we help with the executive coaching is to be able to create systems and technology that can support that. So the, if that eighty-twenty rule, rule can run true throughout the institution, that eighty percent of the students' experience. Will be as designed and provided it is a constructive design, eighty percent of the students easily fit into that. It is the twenty percent of the student experience that requires a very customer-focused, a student-centric. Uh, um, approach by the advisors and other institutional support systems. To really identify and help those individuals work through the process so that you don't lose them. What we don't want to have happen is to really improve the new enrollment process. Only to then have it create tension on the scale of supporting ongoing students so that. You end up with new students who aren't actually able to be retained. So our investment here in this kind of infrastructure that includes both the performance management and the technology in. Um, infrastructure is to be sure that this becomes scalable, it becomes efficient. And it has an opportunity then to be leveraged by the, um, other parts of the organization to support all of those new students. Jennifer, um, um, Jessica's team is going to be able to bring in there to help them have a positive Butler experience and become graduates.
You bet. The other aspect of this consulting and coaching is to move back up to the top of the funnel. And re-engage with some of your marketing, um, components to ensure that we're driving an appropriate level of volume. You know, as the conversion levels go up, we're getting better and better efficiency out of your marketing dollars, but we also learn. Where your successes are going to lie as far as conversion. And that will help Kelly and her team through attribution. Be able to target more effectively where they're going for new students, because. That is the process that ultimately is going to be critical into the future. If we are able to convert at higher levels in the funnel and we're able to produce a higher levels of enrollment. We're also going to have to produce higher levels of interest at the top of the funnel. And we have been, we have said a couple of times, we're so proud of this investment you're making in marketing. Because you will have to continue to invest in creating and generating interest. If we can efficiently convert that interest, we will have a marketing problem again. Because we're going to need more interest at the top of the funnel, right?
We've assured Kelly and her team that our goal is is to make there be a marketing problem that we have to address. With our ability to fill that funnel and thus create more student enrollment.
Yeah. So Jennifer, with the last slide, we'll kind of conclude so that we can handle questions you might have. We feel like we have pulled together a proposal here that is. It's a one-year commitment under the construct of us having the opportunity to directly and fully impact the fall of two thousand and twenty-four. Which is your next and largest targeted enrollment kind of timeframe. That length of term allows us to have taken all of these programs, get them fully converted in this direction. And once we've converted that critical mass of programming, trained your staff. It will set you up to be able to move all of your enrollment practices in the direction of this relationship sales processing. We feel like that is ultimately the answer for the kind of major transition that needs to occur. We've, we have positioned the contract so that we're able to do all three parts of this initiative. That is the consulting and coaching, the performance on your behalf, and the full training and development components. So that we're actually a temporary solution. We are here with you, developing this program, aligning your technology, training your staff. Making sure that we're prepared to respond at the top of the funnel at the end of that process. And then you get to say goodbye to us and you'll have the new system in place on campus so that you can move it forward into the future. And the last piece of this puzzle is because we have been engaged so deeply in the pilot project. We feel like there is a pretty good or strong momentum headed in the direction of this transition. There's a lot of folks on your campus excited about the opportunity that this presents. And we feel like this is the time to capitalize on that kind of an opportunity. So that's kind of the, in a nutshell, what we're proposing. And I'm completely open, Dr. Croll or Jessica, if there's something you feel like we've missed. And then we're happy to try to process some questions if you have them.
I have some questions.
Yes.
So would it be you two coming and training the faculty and advisors here?
We are certainly a part of the team, but we have our own staff and we have some experts. On the enrollment side that would be partnering with us, but yes, we will be there.
Right, we stay deeply engaged, but we also have experts in a variety of different areas. Marketing, admissions, human resources, technology that we will be utilizing. To also be interventionist in this consulting.
But we do our.
Where are you? Where are you located?
Actually, we do, our main business is out of Chicago, but we also have an office and do quite a bit of work in Denver. And so we make the trek between Chicago and Denver, which happens to go very, very close to Kansas. So Butler, Butler's on our line of sight without any question.
So will you come to the campus and see how they're doing, you yourselves?
Oh, yes, I've been here multiple times, yeah.
Will you come to the campus while we're doing this in the next year? You yourselves?
We've, we've been on.
Six, in the two different three-month projects, we've been there three times. To do the different work with people, to launch the project. To actually even interview and work with faculty and the chairs. So I think the short answer to your question, ma'am, is, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to read your name, Mary?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, Mary. So yeah, that's a great question. And yes, we will be on campus and we find that when we have, when we come, we spend all day. And we are there usually at least two to three days at a time and we make fairly frequent visits. We do a lot of this work remotely as, as you know, all of us do. But we do find there are very key times where it's critical for us to be on campus. And to have those face-to-face interactions that are sometimes planned and sometimes just as we're walking through campus.
Yep.
How many colleges are under contract with you at this moment?
We try to keep our load somewhere between three and five. With, we, our, our company is intended to be hands-on. Heather and I are in every single one of our contracts. And it isn't our intention to be huge scale. Because that takes us farther away from the work that we love.
Right.
So we.
I like that.
We keep it right between three and five. And they're very different profile institutions. So we've never ever contracted with competitive kinds of situations. We work across the nation, so we never have come across a situation where it's been a problem.
Right.
So how old is your company? I probably missed that.
We started five years ago.
And in those five years, how many colleges have you done?
Oh, wow.
That's a great question.
We probably worked at least with thirty-five.
Yeah, at least.
Somewhere between thirty-five and forty, all told.
And some of these have been kind of massive institutional-wide renovation projects. And then others have been very targeted strategic intervention projects. And then programs. For specific programs, right, program prioritizations. I'm sure you're familiar with that fun process. We work with a number of institutions for that, for those. In fact, one of our, a couple of our community colleges that we've worked with have been specifically working with. Enrollment types of training, development, infrastructure, designing. And then even some program development that has helped kind of bolster some of the community college opportunities that have been local. And working with nonprofit organizations, mostly nonprofit organizations that are designed to help scale, educate-to-work kind of programs. We've worked on construction.
Jessica.
Programs, things like that.
Okay, Jessica.
Yes.
How do you feel about this?
Um, I am excited about the opportunity to realign the staff as I talked to you. I don't believe you were, yes, you were on Zoom at the last meeting. And we want to reallocate a couple of positions in order to implement the sales approach. And I think having the guidance of. The she group will really help us move that forward. So I really see this as a positive. It is going to be a lot of work. It is going to require. Staff to change processes, change mindset. But I do think that we're ready to do that.
Thank you.
When it, when you talk about systems not being integrated, is there going to be a need for additional? Systems, software, something like that in this process?
You know, through this, we have, our assessment has been that you've made some pretty strategic investments in systems. And we've actually already started some conversations even under the pilot project with some of your. System experts, that would be Banner, Avizo, Recruit. And even Acton, which is a system that you use in marketing. And we haven't found huge fault with any of those choices. They've been strategic and intentional. The challenge is not looking at this as a full-blown funnel as complicated as we've made it. They don't necessarily speak to one another the way they need to speak to one another. And they don't kind of demonstrate the flow. They are much more focused on function than the process or the flow of that. Kind of enrollment, uh, sales process. So we don't feel like you're lacking in systems. We do feel like they need some tweaks and integration. But I would offer, hopefully not out of turn, Jessica and her team had already been working through some of those constructs. And I think some of our pilot work just put a little more heat in the direction of some of the way those need to be converted. Am I out of line, Jessica?
Oh, that is correct. We were already working on some of those things. And so now it's like, okay, we gotta get moving.
Yep.
So in that, sorry, this is Kim. You said, said in your presentation that you didn't feel that BCC was market-sensitive. So what do you consider to be market-sensitive? I mean, what is your, you know, take on that? What are you changing? What kind of basic vision do you have, I guess?
You bet. So I, I, I didn't realize that was the language I used, so I just want to be clear. I don't think that the response to the market is as engaged to meet the expectations of what consumers want right this moment. And in that, the change is that consumers have an expectation. That you're going to be relating to them and responding to their needs even before they know they have those needs. And the only way to, to get that kind of depth of integration is to not only have a relationship with them. But to have an intelligence-enabled system so that you can track that. The simple example I'm going to use is. Google and Amazon know what you want before you even know what you want. And they serve it to you in a very proactive way. And our consumer mentality has shifted such that the expectation of, of these prospective students. Is that their enrollment specialist is going to be able to know them well enough to anticipate where those hurdles are going to be. Where are the bumps in this road? How are we going to help progress them and get them into the enrollment seat as soon as possible? And we do that by developing relationship sales skills. But we also do that by having our systems integrated so that we all know what's happening with that person till the end. And then ultimately, we use that data set to help us profile the types of students that are making successful conversion through the funnel. That's what the market expects at this moment. And Butler has many of the tools. The transition is to make sure that the system, the process, the relationship management is aligned with those tools fully integrated. And now we become customer service-oriented rather than taking orders from them and only progressing them at their pace. We are pre-anticipating their needs.
So in, in short, and it's an oversimplification a bit. But I think it, it is one of the, the terms we used in our pilot project. And when we took it to that second pilot project, which is taking it from a reactive process. From Butler's perspective, when the student asks for something, we give it to them or we send them guidance on how to do it. Rather than a proactive, I see that you're here. Let me help you get to the next step, which is here. And that kind of helps not only keep the student motivated. As we know, people tend to lose interest in a very long buying process and a very expensive and life-haltering buying process. It's easy for those cold feet to set in. So with the relationship-style approach, it is a proactive approach. And the only way we can know where they are and what they're going to need next is to complicate that funnel in a way. That has to be technology-enabled, otherwise it's really not scalable for us to be able to say. We know this is the most difficult part of the process. Or we see there was a trajectory of their movement that looked like this and all of a sudden now it has stabilized. We can go in and understand exactly what's happening in that moment. And if we've done the work right, which is what initiates in the relationship sales part of it. Is to be able to understand not only what are their motivations and what are their goals. But what also could be the things that obstruct them from actually being, becoming a Butler student. So if we're prepared with that information and we're able to monitor their process or their progress through the process. This enables that enrollment person then to have a very constructive conversation. That is able to help then that potential student overcome the hurdles. Be reminded of time-sensitive issues or simply help to diffuse some of the confusion. For those of us who speak higher ed, it, it feels very self-explanatory what the next steps are. But for a lot of our students, particularly in community college systems, who are first-time college-goers. Who are not familiar with the processes and the systems and the culture of it. It is really important for them to have a liaison. And I speak to that from first experience. I mean, I was a first-time college student in my family, first-generation college student. And it wasn't something that my family completely understood and, and felt completely comfortable navigating. I was a very good student, but I had no idea what that was going to look like going into college. So I think that's one of the things in this, we have profiled a lot of the different. Segments of the population that are attending and thriving at Butler. Those are part of the population that we want to be sure that we are not only attracting. But we're actually able to get them enrolled and set up an assistant to retain them.
Okay, like, yeah, you guys at all, I agree with everything you're saying, by the way. You had had on your pricing that you're proposing a stable fee, fee for services versus a long-term rev share pricing. Have you done rev share in the past with other organizations?
We have.
Yeah, and what's the, what do you think is the benefit as far as us doing the stable fee? And along with that, you have in that your, the price for this would be covered by acquiring forty or less new enrollments as a result. Is this full-time enrollments? And to be honest, I don't know how that compares really with what we've lost over the last year, two or three. So maybe the administration can chime in on that. I'm just wondering, like, is this a hail mary we're doing here? Or is this very, very doable? You know, what, what, what are those?
Perfect set of questions. And, and start with the first one because I think it's critically important. Oftentimes, when organizations like ours do this work on behalf of an institution. They do it on a revenue-share basis, which is a way for them to benefit from their success. Just like the institution benefits from their success. That model works for the private sector much more productively than it does the public sector. And so one of the reasons we believe that the stable price, the set price works for Butler better. Is because you're, you're a public institution and that is a, a critical component of not just your mission, but your price point. And your relationship with the state. All of those things play a role. The rev share model has been exploited historically as well. And we have worked in rev shares in the past and we probably will work in rev share models into the future. But the critical ingredient here is your team wants to make this change. A pivot in the way you do enrollment for the future. They don't want a temporary intervention where they just have us come in and then we exit.
Outsource, yeah.
Your team is looking for a transformation. And that training and development aspect of this is something that means we're setting you up. Working with you to be set up to move this forward into the future, future independent of that relationship. Most rev share models are somewhere between five and seven years. That is a long time and that is a lot of revenue that goes on through that. But this training and development model, in our opinion, works better for Butler. The equivocation of that forty students was a very simply, simple math equation to help you understand. How not, not gigantic the scale of this contract is. We, we know that one of the most critical ingredients here is for us to ultimately increase enrollment at Butler. But this in, this investment in a new process in a, an enrollment transformation. Is actually very likely to produce significantly more than forty students. If we take the track record of this one pilot project. And we put it there specifically for us to put in context this concept. That the enrollment targets that we're going to be able to develop and set are going to communicate kind of in advance. What that opportunity is going to look like. But ultimately, that equivocation isn't a net revenue number, so I don't want it to be distracting, right? You don't earn students on the basis of head, or you don't earn money on the basis of head counts. You earn it on the basis of credit hours. And you have a state allocation that comes with those revenues. So it's important for that not to be a distraction for you all. We were just trying to help you understand that if you take the annual amount of a fully enrolled student. We're really talking about somewhere in the ballpark of this forty number. And we believe that we helped bolster enrollment in our pilot project by somewhere in the ballpark of twenty students. And we believe that we helped bolster enrollment in our pilot project by somewhere in the ballpark of twenty students. So this is not a hail Mary. This is a very doable, intentional kind of net contract gain. And that's really what we're trying to say. I hope that helps.
And you know, honestly, the hail Mary would be a little bit more the design of what would typically be a revenue share process, where both organizations are taking on the risk that way. With this, I, there doesn't, this doesn't, feels like the furthest thing from a hail Mary. It feels like an intervention that has a prime environment to actually yield some incredible results. And for that reason, we don't feel like you likely need us for the next five to seven years, at least not in this capacity. Now, we'd love to have an extended, long-term relationship. We often do with our clients across a number of different problems they're trying to solve. And some organizations really just aren't set up to scale for this kind of growth. Butler is not one of them. So we could provide additional intervention on a long-term basis, but right now it appears as though there are resources that can be redistributed within Butler. And you can fully take this on, on your own with some help for the next year or so.
So does the program? I mean, it seems to me like everything in society is just consistently changing. About all you can really bank on is that next year, something's going to be different. So if you guys are here for just a short amount of time, how does that set the staff up for long-term, you know, success, three, four, or five years down the road? If say TikTok is now illegal and we're doing something else with social media. I mean, you just don't know. So and along with that, you know, I, I come from a real estate background, so I only get paid if I succeed in, in what I'm doing, you know, whether it's working with, you know, buyer seller, even on my appraisal side, having my own customers. So I, I see a rev share as, as something that would work for both parties because there's no risk to the college if it doesn't work. And if there's, if it works, then everybody benefits from that. But without knowing what a rev share would look like, it's hard to really see what that, how it would compare to the, the fixed fee.
But we, we had not vetted that deeply with your administration and it isn't something we're averse to trying to talk through or to think through if that would be of interest, you know, to the broader group. But I, I think the core reason here for this contract to be written in the form that it is is because we really are talking about a, a one-time pivot in the direction to a sales approach. That doesn't mean it becomes static. In fact, it sets you up for it to be more alive and more prepared for the future than it ever has been. Because we've moved away from individual functions and moved into a relationship funnel. And that, that critical juncture is really what's on the table. It could be that once we get that transformation put in place, further support and expansion, particularly at the top of the funnel, is something you're really interested in. And that would be a conversation we would be open to. But I think the way Dr. Kroll and Jessica have profiled this immediate transition or transformation is why we landed at this kind of an approach to the contract.
I think just as you were describing with rev share, keeping risk among both organizations. If there is no success or if the, whatever success is experienced, it gets equivocated out to both organizations. And that is 100% a true statement. And we do work with revenue share agreements. But in a revenue share agreement, that it is much less, well, in fact, it is almost exclusively two organizations doing what they do best, but doing it together toward a, a, the same goal. Which would mean if we are working with the enrollment side of the house, we are responsible for the enrollment, period. And we would negotiate with our client institution to create systems that help to make that process as smooth as possible. And those are things that are negotiated before any of those revenue share contracts are created. It is not designed to teach the client institution how to do this work on their own, much less develop the infrastructure. Basically, we're setting up one that makes our services potentially obsolete at the end of it. And that isn't how a revenue share is designed. A revenue share is designed when, when we might have the capacity to do this, but we really don't have the interest, kind of like mowing my lawn. I'm not interested. I could learn to mow my lawn. In fact, I do know how to mow my lawn, but I don't want to mow my lawn. So I would much rather outsource that. And so with this design, it is so that if you had services that you wanted to retain on a long-term basis, absolutely can be done. But in the scope of how we've designed it now, this would mean that yes, we will perform many of the functions on your behalf as we are teaching it so that we become obsolete in the end. And then there are choices. Are there pieces of it that you would ultimately say? Jessica may say, you know, we might want some of those early calls to just continue to be outsourced because the volume of those is probably going to surpass, you know, our ability to, to do this with the level of staff that we want. So it might be most cost effective to outsource those. Right now, there aren't a lot of those opportunities because kind of holistically, there is a transformation that needs to be made. I think once this transformation is made and Jessica and Dr. Kroll assess and say, you know, maybe some of these things that we would need to staff up for as we grow. Cause one of the things we hope for Butler is that your enrollment grows so much that you will have to think about staffing up and, and prioritizing your resources differently. And at that point, you may decide outsourcing might make some sense or some, some kind of shared interactions like that. But for right now, our assessment has been is that Butler has every capability and capacity to do this on your own. What you need is some consulting and training. And in the meantime, kind of like fixing the airplane while you fly it. You can't afford to lose any time and, and enrollment in the process in this. So we're hoping to do them both at the same time, both renovate and fly the plane. And at the same time, so that, so that we're not losing any momentum at the time we're gaining it and we're making the transitions kind of midair. That was a terrible analogy and I apologize for that.
I get what you're trying to say. So.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, the only other question I had, Mary already asked.
The poor mechanic on the engine.
Yeah. Sorry.
I've, I've got one quick question, but does anybody else have any to? So how, how did you measure the, the delta of the enrollment increase in culinary to attribute the portion to this new process?
Can you re-ask it? We missed, we missed part of what you said at the beginning there, sir.
Oh, sure. So how, how did you measure the portion of the enrollment increase in culinary that you felt was attributed to this change in process?
So we, we're a little bit on the data nerd side of the house. And we, we actually assessed what your conversion rates have been with a typical funnel over about a four-year period. And we processed that strategically, kind of term by term by term. And we began that analysis specifically to, to see where the quirks were in your data set. And as you've driven more enrollment volume at the top, it hasn't dramatically impacted conversion rates for some time. So we were aware that it wasn't just, it wasn't a volume issue at this moment, but it was in the steps and the process through the funnel. We can't take our system and map it back. But we can take what has happened in the past and kind of map it forward. And so it was that analysis that kind of allowed us to understand where those transitions and conversions. And when we compared old data, both on times, that is times to movement through the funnel, funnel stages, and then ultimately the net enrollment based on the top level interest. We feel very strongly that this change and the, the delta in our scenario is as a result of the intervention that we applied. From a staff perspective, it meant the sales process and those funnel staging relationships that actually converted just at significantly higher rates than we have ever seen in your funnel numbers in the past.
And to be clear, those weren't just interventions made from the she-staff. There were great efforts made by the advising team at Butler, by the financial aid team at Butler, by the accounts payable team at Butler. These, this was an all-in initiative. Stacy coined it the drive fifty-five. And it was fun. And it, it was a, it, it was quite an aggressive goal. And it certainly wasn't going to be done just with external consultants. No matter how many calls or no matter how many relationships that were created with the potential students, they really have to be supported by the Butler internal systems. And so the team that was collected and the team that put their efforts forward and learned new systems. And we took a few things outside of the Butler system because we couldn't interrupt what was happening for the majority of students on campus to test this. So we took it outside of the system and, and the participants from across the Butler campus who participated in this took on the extra work, trusted us and did it, and then celebrated the success with us was pretty amazing. And I think that is a lot as what has created this momentum with the team. They were excited. Because it wasn't just a win for Butler, it was a win for them too. They saw things happening in their own systems, in their own roles. One of the things we've experienced with the team at Butler is a lot of schools like to tell us how student focused they are. And then we get into their systems and we talk to their people. And while I think they're all good people, they don't always have a ton of student focus. We did not find that at Butler. We found the way people are doing business, the frustration that people expressed and experienced of, of how they're trying to do their jobs and do the best that they can. And of course, when you have consultants come into town, everybody immediately feels like there's going to be fingers pointed and you're doing this wrong and you're not good at your job or, you know, whatever those things are. But what we found is that we had a team who was so interested and doing the very best that they could to serve those students to the very best of their capacity, what, you know, the processes that were offered. We were able to provide some insight to take things, we had the permission of the leadership at Butler to do things totally differently for this very small group so that we could see what would, those results would yield. And so it wasn't just a win for culinary, which is wonderful. And, and we've gotten to meet the folks who work at culinary. We're glad they experienced a wonderful fall enrollment season, but it really was validating, I think, to the Butler team that was able to participate in it and see that the fruits of their efforts in their respective areas. You know, collecting tuition, making sure people's financial aid paperwork was filled out and complete so that they could start school. They were very invested in that. And I think thankful, not always for the extra work, but the results that it yielded when we implemented this separate process.
And maybe just to distill the question down, how many students? How many additional students do we think we have at culinary this semester that we would not have had but for the change in process? And I know it's an estimate. I, I get that. I'm just.
And, and it's a forecast kind of scenario.
Twenty-nine more than what the projections of trend would have had.
So it would have been.
Jessica, are those predominantly full-time students?
I would need to look at the data. It's going to be a mix.
Okay. Hey, thank you all for joining us.
Thank you. I think you've shared a lot of information with us and given some good insight into the work that we can potentially do together. And so we'll, you know, visit with the board and we'll be in touch. Okay?
Sounds great. Thank you all.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica's still online? Yeah. So the, the contract is a $300,000 contract for a year's worth of work. But as they indicated, you know, significant intervention with staff on their end, walking alongside and working with all of our, our staff. They talk about sixteen program areas, but I don't, and I don't have a list in front of me, but all of the CTE programs we talked about, we talked about fine arts and, and digital communications. We talked about them also impacting and working with the students that are coming to us in more, in, in the more liberal arts area, correct, Jessica? I don't remember now what term we, we added to that, but it's like the, the students that are coming to us to take Janet's. That's one of the, it's where we are losing enrollment. And so we, we felt like with the, the focus in that area, there would be some opportunity for enrollment change. Some of the CTE programs don't have a spring cohort, cohort start. They only do fall cohort. Some of the work that they would do now would already start to impact some of our spring, that, you know, they would like to try and start to impact spring enrollment. But really with a goal in mind that it would impact fall enrollment. They, as they looked, as we looked at this, the, the mass, the critical mass of students in those programs is about a third of our student enrollment currently, right now, if I remember correctly. And felt like, if, if you want to see some significant potential change in enrollment, you, you gotta work with a critical mass of students to, you know, to make a difference. And so that's kind of how those programs were identified in our conversations. Some of them already are showing some success in enrollment that can be built upon and can, can, can be continued. There are other areas where, you know, those programs need support and help. So. So that's the, that's the contract that they've put in front of us. There are funds and designated account, what we talked about in VPs was using some of the strategic innovation funds to, to support this cost. I think that fund had eight hundred and fifty thousand, projected eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in it at the end of the year. But that didn't include this potential expenditure. So you know, you have questions, follow-up questions for me, more information that you want from me to ask them to provide.
When would we need to have them working on this? To effectuate a change in fall of twenty-four?
They're already, they're already continuing to work with Kelly and, and doing some follow-up work. They're still continuing to work in the culinary area on the extended project there. Jessica's already, and, and Shelley have already looked at some realignment of current, a couple of current job descriptions to identify some folks that would be trained in this sales approach and would be, you know, kind of in the lead of doing this. So they're already, they're already working with us, but they, but it's a continuation of the project that they have started through marketing. So there's.
Oh, yeah. We, we would like to begin training of the individuals that have been identified to fill the sales role on week of January eighth. So that's why, you know, it's important as we move forward that we can bring this to the December meeting for approval in order to keep our, our timeline.
What did we pay them for the culinary program?
I think it was, well, through marketing and through the work that they did, I think it was sixty thousand dollars over a period of time, right? And those were marketing dollars that had allocated to work with them. And I, I think it's interesting, well, I guess from my perspective. I mean, Kelly engaged them to start off with to help her understand marketing processes and, you know, the whole top of the enrollment funnel and attracting students and stuff. And how, and this evolved into a much broader understanding of our, you know, movement, student movement from the top of the funnel all the way to actual enrollment. And so it really created some insights into things that we have an opportunity to change.
Jessica, how many people will you be training?
There will be two staff members. I believe two that we will train. And then also I will receive some training as well and mentoring and coaching and how to build up the staff.
That's awfully small for this amount of money.
Well, but they're using their staff. They're, they're implementing, they are implementing a number of team members to work alongside our folks.
How many staff will they be bringing in?
I don't know for certain.
You can find that out.
I can find out. And I do think that the strategies that the, the two individuals on our team are going to learn, we will be able to use those things across our enrollment management departments. I think it'll help inform other departments on ways that they can improve their, their services as well.
Are these new people?
They um are relatively new to the college, but they're not new posi- positions.
Right, okay, that's good. You know, it's just hard to change an old dog.
So they're excited, they're looking forward to it.
Can we create a baseline so we understand how many people are in the departments today? So that when we try to measure this in another year, they come back, we understand how many people we're talking about, I mean, you're saying in um financial aid and accounts payable. How many people are we talking about? It changes what they do from a training and also, so we have two people, we train them, they bring their people in. How can it realistically mean that in another year, we can do this with just two people when we've been doing it with their help and ours, five or six?
Right, right. Well, it's a build-out, it's a it's a build-out of that training process, train trainer sorts of stuff, so, yeah, yeah, we can.
But I'd like for us to to define what we have today.
Okay.
If because if we do approve this, then in a year, I wanna see, I don't.
We don't wanna see the numbers that have been trained, yeah.
It's either that or we can pay another four hundred thousand, you know what I mean?
Yes, I know what you're saying.
And my, maybe I misunderstood, my my interpretation of what she said was about making themselves obsolete, that was not a one-year process.
I took that as being a one-year process.
It's a one-year contract that we're that we're talking about.
But if you're talking about institutional change, I don't see that happening in one year with only two people in house.
Correct, I agree.
Well, Jessica and Kelly have been more directly involved in this, so you know, Jessica, what's your, I mean, you've had more direct conversations with him about the whole training piece.
Right, well, I mean, if you think about it, we are redefining two positions that are going to have, I think, a huge impact on where we get with enrollment, um because we're going to be doing it differently. Um would I like to have more than two? Yes, because I think that our numbers at the top of the funnel, our applicants, we can definitely justify more than two. At this point, um we can only shift or reallocate duties for two. Um so I think that as we go forward, we you know, my, it would be my hope and my desire that we would will see this be successful and potentially want to expand the number of people that are in this enrollment coach position.
And that was sort of.
So I don't know if that answers your question or if that makes it more difficult, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I didn't mean to suggest that I was bothered by an extension, we'll be informed this time next year as to whether what we've done to that point was it, if we approved the three hundred thousand dollars, wasn't money well spent? And if it, if we don't think we got the bang for the buck, then that's gonna inform whether we want to extend this, if this thing hits out of the park.
Haven't we already approved this?
No, we haven't approved.
No.
That's, I'd at least like to see some kind of proposal on the rev share, since they've done it in the past, I don't think it hurts to at least look at that as an option.
Okay.
Don't think you can do rev share with admissions work because it violates federal standards with financial aid.
That's true, I thought about that.
Right, we do have, we do have to be really careful about that. I'm not sure, you know, when they talked about having rev share previously, what their setup was and, you know, what their scope of their projects were, but we would need to be very careful that we don't violate federal law and then jeopardize our financial aid.
Yeah, that would not be good, so can we, can we talk to them about, you know, they've said they've worked with thirty-five, forty institutions. Have they had success in doing this type of an implementation in a one-year turnaround, like what we're talking about? Cause I mean, if we're, if it's three hundred thousand this year and it's probably gonna be two hundred next year, I I just didn't know that upfront personally. And make an educated decision on the whole thing instead of, well, but.
I asked them, I asked them to provide some information on their prior successes.
Right.
Um and I think, you know, we just ran out of time, but I'll email them and ask them to buy, you know, provide some information.
Some good references.
Oh yeah, they're they're willing to do that.
And I think just, I mean, we're gonna be working on twenty twenty-five budget and this is about twenty twenty-four money really, so. We need to understand, it's this is, I mean, it's not just approving once, it's already putting us in a position where we're gonna have to do something in next year and we need to allow for that.
I'll follow up, I'll follow up in an email to them uh with some of these questions that you've asked and some of the additional information that you want. If you think of other things in the next, you know, couple of days, let me know.
Well, and I would just like to have kind of feedback from the other departments that are gonna have an impact. Like I said, baseline for one and number two, uh I mean, are they excited to?
Well, they've been, yeah, they've been part of larger meetings, Jessica can speak to this, I mean, we've had teams around the table and.
Yeah, I think, I guess I need a little bit more clarification on your question, Linda. I think the biggest lift is going to be with these enrollment coaches and they're gonna be working directly with the individuals in the other um enrollment departments like financial aid and advising and that kind of thing. Um so while I, when I said that, you know, I think that they'll learn from them, I do think that they'll learn, like, you know, some of the strategies and um but I don't envision them being enrollment coaches.
Right, but if you increase, if you increase their workload, are they anticipating that? Do they feel like they can handle it? And I'd rather they know now than all of a sudden they've got all this work and they didn't. They said, well, we did that little pilot project and we handled that, but we can't do this with what we've got. I mean, in real, and realistically, I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page and that they aren't, they aren't inheriting something they didn't anticipate.
Okay.
Jessica, this is Shelley, do you think, do you think some of that will kind of transition as the processes become more refined? And therefore I think that there'll be less work for, you know, those other departments because they're more integrated and they can see what's happening, they don't have to wait for you to tell me what's happening. I can look and see it because the integration between those systems and the processes are happening.
And then maybe the system picks it up and takes care of it without them having to do it.
Right, and there's less paper floating back and forth and it's a little more seamless. Would would I, would I be correct, that's my understanding, but would would that be?
I believe, I believe so, again, you know, some of it is, we know, we need the training, we need their our their guidance on on these items as well.
Yeah.
Got any questions? Yeah, thank you, thanks, everybody. And yeah, um do you wanna just give them a little bit of a heads up on insurance stuff? Okay, okay. Yeah, please, there's sandwiches back there, people wanna go grab a sandwich and some chips and stuff while you're sitting here for the last information from Kent on insurance. Help yourself, you want my blanket?
So we're preparing to um look at the renewal of insurance, which will come about in June of this year. And it's become a little more complicated than I thought it would be. Uh right now, we're with KIRP, which is a pool and um in order to go out and bid this or get other quotes, we would actually have to put in a a notice to them that says we're looking to um non-renew with you. And once we do that, there's some consequences that go along with that. And they only allow you a one-month period. So we would have to, in order to do it, we would have to pass a resolution at the December board meeting saying we plan to opt out, give that to KIRP uh December thirty-first. And we have one month to decide if we can actually get better insurance. And even if we decide to come back, there are gonna be some consequences to that.
Sure.
We would have to come back basically as a new member. And uh we, we've, I've had some discussions with both Chris, Conrad, E R, current page and and with Ryan locally here. And we're gonna set up a meeting next week. One meeting with Chris and one meeting with Ryan. Dr. Croll and I will get more information on this, but it's a, it's a tricky deal and what we found, well, we anticipate that KIRP's gonna go up another twenty percent this year. That's, that's the market, market and inflation, you know, between the two. My sense is from talking uh with Ryan, with Chris and with um other business officers across the the system, there's only one company right now that's doing a community college business in Kansas and that's Philadelphia, so we don't have a lot of, it doesn't look like we're gonna have a lot of companies that are gonna wanna bid. Ryan says he may have some other people, but um remains to be seen. He's not gonna be able to get us quotes in that month period. The best he can do probably is to say, yes, I have a market that will give you, that is interested in giving you a quote. So I wanted to make sure.
Guarantee, there's no guarantee that he'll actually be able to get that quote then, right?
Right, so you know, maybe we didn't do our homework as well as we should have, although I think KIRP probably was the best place for us to be the last two years. Uh a lot of, we had a big increase, a lot of the increase was getting our property schedule up to appraised value, which would probably have been um, you know, getting some lower premiums in the past than we should have because our property uh schedule was not at the appraised value. So it's, it's a difficult situation. Uh and again, I wanted to give you a heads up before we come in to the December meeting because we will have to make a decision at that time and if if we decide it's in our best interest to look elsewhere, you will have to to uh pass a resolution to uh let KIRP know that we are opting out.
How long has the behavior been going on? How the insurance companies, if we have to let them?
Well, this is a special situation because it's a pool, it's a self-funded pool that that we're in with KIRP. They've got uh a lot of Kansas school districts in six of the Kansas community colleges. Um.
I don't, I'd I'd have to go back and watch the video. My recollection of our meeting with Mr. Conrad, he was, we were locking in for two years and we could reevaluate. And that's, we're locking in for two years and we're gonna stick it to you if you choose to reevaluate.
I I understand where you're coming from, but this is the reevaluation and whether we probably did not understand the full context of that at the time.
I don't think he explained it, I I don't know that that question didn't come up in a way that that should have been explained at the time.
I'm not gonna.
Again, I'm 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 remembering back a year and a half, so it's, I may be off on this.
I think you're expressing some of the.
A little bit of uh bait and switch, which is what I felt like a year ago when they decided that we have to up our property values, which they knew what they were when they came in and then decided a year later that we were all, all of a sudden, we were thirty percent underinsured or fifty percent underinsured, whatever it was.
Yeah, and I understand that, that I have some of those feelings also. I would say that if you stand back and and look at it um sort of unemotionally, I think we're still maybe, probably in the best situation we could be in right now. That the deductible is one considerably better than we're gonna get on the market. And I'm not, I have some severe doubts whether Philadelphia is gonna come in with lower premiums than what we have now. We save money going with KIRP to start with, so yeah, this, I hear what you're saying, the bait and switch. Um and I'm not gonna try to defend Chris or KIRP on that, but if we're still in the better situation than we are gonna be otherwise, I think that's what we need to look at.
I think it's hard to say we're in a better situation when they gave us a better quote for one year and then they ran our rates through a roof after twelve months.
Yeah, and you know, if if Ryan feels comfortable that he can get us a good quote, we can get out. And that's, that's what we need to decide.
How much is twenty percent?
Hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
So what, if we come back, if we, you know, explore options and then decide we wanna come back to this room, what does that look like or will they even tell us?
Um well, we.
Coming in as a new person.
We have been notified by Chris that we're probably looking at a twenty percent with them, if we come back with them, we would come back as a new member, so we, I think we would probably have the two-year commitment again. Rather than a one-year commitment. Um and there's no, while I, my conversation with Chris, while we would probably be accepted back, there's no guarantee that we would be accepted back on the same terms, probably would.
We haven't had any major claims, you know, so we haven't impacted the pool in a negative way from, you know, from a claims perspective, but.
And there's uh, you know, we can have both agents come to the meeting next month, want. You wanna find out as much, um we've got a couple times committed on Doc's calendar next Monday, Tuesday. And both the agents have responded to me that they can meet at that time, so we're gonna meet with them individually and.
I think that makes more sense than putting them on on the floor together and trying to, when neither one of them is gonna be in a position to do anything more than estimate, that's gonna happen.
It's a thing, there's just a lot of unknowns. Were we uh covered by Philadelphia before?
Philadelphia became a player after we got out of Mac.
I think we should.
Look like so either.
I can't remember the name of the company that's mine.
Chubb?
Was it Chubb?
Chubb, yes, it was Chubb. It's a tough market.
It's becoming that way.
Yeah, everybody's kind of in a bind.
Probably, that would just that bad a risk. I mean, I mean, it seems like public, that public entities would not be a bad risk.
When you say we be on our our school district.
Well, I guess both, I mean, what, what, why would you not want to, what about a school district is, is is a poor risk?
Part of its location. Our location is a risk from an insurance company perspective.
For wind hail.
Well, but you can treat, that's what premiums are for, and you just, you adjust the premium, what, why would, why would carriers not even?
Why the premiums have been going up? It's a lot of roofs too, it's not just one building and one lawn, she could lose whole campus. I mean, you could all have a.
Yeah. Had hail damage on every single roof on campus. And every car and vehicle was damaged except for a couple of them. So, you know, we had a, we had a, what, seven point two million dollar each, yeah. Insurance.
Not on our claims history.
Yeah, yeah.
But you saw that in all of El Dorado.
Sure.
I mean, proportionally, I bet eighty percent of the homes in El Dorado were ended up with hail claims.
I know that, well, I've been told, I'm not likely involved in our office, they're aware, but I've heard that Pitt State and different universities have been told to tear down buildings, like eliminate roofs for this, it's very reason. And that's why I was alluding to last time we had this discussion, has there been any thought process as to are there any structures that can be eliminated if we are more strategic about our student placement?
We have, we have followed up on that. Um and we'll have some information for you on that. I I talked to Chris about how much we could save, we think there's one building also in that category, so we'll give you that.
Wouldn't necessarily take it, I don't know that we'd have to take it now, but to stop ensuring it, maybe we could use it and if it goes away, oh well, that's.
So we will have some information for you on that.
It's interesting, the four-year schools are saying that and that every time I go by a four-year school.
That's why I said no for, like, no for standing up.
Yeah.
That's what I wrote, I don't know what we're doing yet.
Yeah, they're, they're knocking down their old buildings, every campus is built like.
Your net square footage really isn't, you're not changing your net square, I guess you're keeping it.
Which does state, Emporia State, Pittsburgh State.
Pittsburgh's building.
Yeah, K U, K U's the one I've seen, those three. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Kent.
Thanks, Kent.
We're done.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Arroy, for staying.